This time I'd like to call to order the July 15, 2014 Yukon Oklahoma City Council Meeting. If you would rise with me for the invocation by Pastor Bob Bions, First United Methodist Church, and the flag salute.
Let us pray. O loving God, the maker of all this world and the creator of each of us along the way, we give you thanks for the many blessings we have in life, in community, in family, and governance. We're grateful for the richness of opportunities in this great community, for those who lead us, for those who make decisions on our behalf. We pray your blessings upon them tonight as they lead and decide and choose and make the course into the future on behalf of the community. Give them guidance, be within their minds and in their hearts that they will decide for the right. We pray your blessings upon us all in this community in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
This time we'll hold a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the 2014 CDBG project. Do we have anyone here that would like to address the council, citizen of Yukon, on this topic? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and proclamations.
None this evening.
None this evening. This is our visitor section of our agenda, and we have a visitor here that would like to address the council. If you would come forward, please. Patrick McClung.
Council members, Mayor, Mr. Bottom. My name is Patrick McClung, and you guys have gotten phone calls from me recently. And I love Yukon, proud to be a part of this community, raise my family here, and I'm excited to announce a website that we've been running called yukonsbest.com where we've been talking about all the great events that you guys have been hosting here, being out kind of on the street and seeing the citizens in their element, participating in the activities of Yukon. So I wanted to address you guys today and just say thank you for doing the job that you guys are doing. You're doing a great job, and if you want to see some of the people in action at the events that you're going to, check out the website. And if you guys have any questions, I've given you my phone numbers and email addresses, and I would love to hear your feedback. Thank you.
Might mention what the web, the name of the website?
Yukonsbest.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. As many of you know, we passed a resolution recently, have some forms filled out in order to address the council. This is only the second meeting since it's actually taken effect, and I appreciate you following that. Patrick, we will allow a little bit of cushion since it's so new. Do we have any other visitors here that would like to address the council on a non-agended Seeing none, we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as a Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve (a) the minutes of the regular meeting of July 1, 2014, and (b) payment of material claims in the amount of $163,881.69. Do we have a motion?
Shall move.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
This time we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council can by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve (a) the minutes of the special meeting, June 27, 2014, (b) the minutes of the regular meeting of July 1, 2014, (c) payment of material claims in the amount of $622,308.12, (d) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, (e) the renewal of the existing contract with the Yukon Public School District to provide school resource officers at the high school and middle school for the term of July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015, for the sum of $150,000. Item F, the renewal of the existing Compassionate Hands Incorporated Agreement for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost of $12,000. G, the renewal of the existing Sister Cities International Agreement for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost of $360. H, the renewal of the agreement for services between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Chamber of Commerce for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost of $1,500 per month plus a sales tax incentive. I, denial of claim number 137573-TW from Robert Wallace as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. J, denial of claim number 137599-TW from Rick Treeman as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. K, denial of claim number 137750-ME from Johnny Hoffman as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. L, denial of claim number 138188-ME from Meredith Smith as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. M, installation of two Speed Limit 25 signs on Garden Grove as recommended by the Traffic Commission. N, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August 5, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do we have a motion?
All right.
With, I'm sorry, with the item number H to be withdrawn, please.
Item H will be withdrawn from item 1 off the Consent Docket and will be heard in its regular order. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
This time we'll address item H, the renewal of the agreement for services between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Chamber of Commerce for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost of $1,500 per month plus a sales tax incentive. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item for future consideration due to the number of folks that have active interests and all of which need to be heard and that sort of thing, and I don't, you know, so I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
Do we have any discussion?
I actually...
I need to interrupt for a second, just so we're clear, if we table it, it comes back at the next meeting.
Well, that's actually a question that I had in this part of the discussion.
If you postpone it or postpone it indefinitely, then it doesn't come back until somebody asks for it to come back.
Well, okay. In my discussion, I would like to say that I would not like to see it postponed indefinitely. I think the next meeting, the first meeting in August is probably, probably a little bit too quick. I think maybe the second meeting in August, in my opinion, would be more appropriate, and we could...
We just need to amend the motion.
Well, I have another question. I wonder if it's possible that we put this on the study session for the first meeting in August to give us a chance to discuss what it is we need to discuss.
It's fine from my point, my perspective, it's fine.
Okay, does that need to be part of the motion that's made? So the motion needs to be amended to have it put on the, back on the agenda on the second meeting of August?
Yes.
Or are you interested in amending?
I will amend the motion to be considered in the second session of second council meeting in August.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
I want to say one thing. I've been here now for over a decade, and our relationship with the chamber has steadily improved, and I think that it's imperative that we continue to improve that relationship and that it be specifically defined, and as I understand it, hopefully now we'll be able to get together and work through whatever issue exists. So I'm happy that it's tabled, and I think that it's important that we continue to move forward, and only we're going to be able to move forward if we have open communication and discussion and moving it forward. So, so that we're clear, we're going to, it's put over to the second meeting in August, but the first meeting, we're going to have a discussion...
On our study session agenda.
...study session, so anyone that's welcome, I assume the mayor, and I don't mean to invite to your meeting, but I encourage those people to come and have some input and be involved in that discussion.
Yeah, now I have a question from Mike along those lines. If it is on our agenda, study session agenda, the first meeting of August, will guests there with interest in this contract have an opportunity to speak, or is it just...
Absolutely, I mean, that's been the policy all along.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
I don't need to change that now.
Very good. Do we have any further discussion?
I think I also would like to encourage all folks on the different sides to make sure if they have an opportunity to contact the opposing parties on either side of the argument that they do so ahead of time, whether that's the, within the chamber, and certainly any of the membership that has been disaffected, that's concerned about the chamber and the direction of Yukon and where we're going to get those things all on the table, and hopefully by the time we sit down the second week in August, we'll have a lot of the issues resolved at that time, and certainly we can come to a better conclusion.
Do we have any other discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Now, hold on.
This is, this is to vote to table it until the second meeting of August?
You want to table it, that's a yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
Non-sitting mayor.
Thank you. Item 3, consider approving the Citizen Participation Plan for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Application. Do we have a motion?
Shall move.
Do we have a...
Second.
I'm sorry, was that a second, Mike?
Second, yeah.
Okay, I spoke over you, apologize. Do we have any discussion?
I like block grant.
I would mention, though, that in that background information, that's an impressive presentation that's put together, impressive. Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving the Statement of Needs for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Application.
Shall move.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Consider approving Resolution Number 2014-12, a resolution allocating $64,567 as a match for a Community Development Block Grant of $64,567 for installation and repair of infrastructure and authorizing execution of documents necessary for the transaction. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 6, consider approving Resolution Number 2014-13, a resolution accepting the 2014 CDBG application with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and accepting matching funds for $64,567 for the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Shall move.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call the roll.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have been attending public hearings and votes on CDBG for about 25 years. I know it occurs, but in 25 years, I have never heard any public comment, nor has the public participation plan ever been challenged, and I'm talking about approximately 35 counties and all the cities contained in those counties. I would encourage anybody that wishes to make comment about the CDBG, which is a incredibly important program for us in Yukon as well as all the state of Oklahoma, to read the information that is provided from time to time when we have those and to make comment about CDBG. It doesn't have to be somebody opposed, but just make a comment concerning CDBG when you have the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bottom. Item 7, consider approving an expenditure of funds for repainting and striping of ladder 1 in the amount of $26,981.20 to be paid from the capital improvement funds as requested by the fire chief.
Shall move.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 8 is consider approving an expenditure of funds for estimated remodeling costs of 334 Elm Avenue Proposed Office for Development Services in the amount of $56,357 to be paid from the capital improvement funds as requested by the planning director. Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I have one question. When I reviewed this information, it appears that there's three years left on the lease. Is that right?
Three years left on the lease.
Okay.
At $100 bucks a month.
Okay, and the probability of it being extended, is this a long-term? I guess I'm looking at the $56,000 build-out, so is that, will we use it longer than three years?
We would hope that at the end of three years, at least, decisions have been made relative to other opportunities on office space, that we have options for renewing or not renewing. To be clear, we are, in fact, in front of you this evening for your information are the demolition bids for the Snyder's Building that we anticipate presenting to you at the first meeting of August in anticipation of building a new city hall. Those are decisions that will be made along the way, but the fact remains that we are currently out of room, and we must move forward to provide adequate space for the staff related to development services that also causes a chain reaction of human resources moving to what we know as the Lingo Building next door to City Hall, and then also the employment of a public information officer, and we need a space to put them, and we are out of space.
Do we know, oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. How long, how long will the renovations take?
Mitch, would you please help me here? Since he's the one that recommends the expenditure.
We don't have a current rate of time, but I would say within two months, we could be in the building with what needs to be done. Part of that, part of that build-out is actually furniture, if you'll look at it, and we broke it down for you so you know the actual cost of our move.
Okay, that I didn't see, because that's, it's 5.8 years worth of rent.
Yes.
So, for a three-year lease, so I just, so, and I'm sorry, Mitch, I didn't see that part of it, which, how much of the $56,000...
I don't have that breakdown in front of me. I thought you'd have it in your packet, sorry about that.
I do, and I did that.
$56,000. Yeah.
Okay, so we're down to $50,000 build-out.
And IT's another $11,600 to get it where we can have phone service as well as internet.
But that stays there, that isn't going to leave.
That's correct.
Because that's wiring, is that right?
Yeah. One of the things, the reason we were looking at a different place, you know, they moved us to the Lingo Construction Building. Parking's very limited for a contractor, so one of the things, we're talking with Grayson, we were looking at a place that the contractors could bring their backhoes with them or their trailers with them. If you'll look, we only have about four to five spaces there that we share with adjoining property owner, and it's been kind of a hassle for some people to get in and out, so that's one of the reasons we were looking at the move to the proposed new location.
I can tell you, if you drive anything more than a short bed pickup pulling up to that door, you, it's really not safe to park there anyway.
Well, and we've had a couple of issues with the width of the trucks that are parking there as well as the length, the hitches and stuff, we've had some pretty close calls there.
And I don't have a problem with the move or even the build-out, just the idea that we're building, put it into a leased building, that we're going to have a three-year lease, and if I can understand what Grayson said a minute ago, that we're probably not going to be there a whole long. I mean, that just seems to be a lot of money to work.
That is why I wrestled with this decision to present this to you for two months, but we are getting pushed to the point that we have few choices left.
What are those?
First of all, we convert what little space that we currently have in City Hall to an office. We leave Human Resources where it is, which is crowded, particularly when you consider the new function of safety that we have taken on in Human Resources, and then we have no place to put the necessary number of code enforcement officers and inspectors that we have in the Lingo Building.
Also with the move, we're moving our stormwater department and our grant writer with us, too, so we're trying to make it a one-stop shop, where it actually truly is a one-stop shop, and I think the space is going to be used for other departments that we're vacating over there at the Court Clerk Building.
Does this cost, include the move itself?
It does not actually include the physical move because we're going to use city personnel to move our equipment.
Of course you count that.
And we've valued engineering this several times, getting it down, so I'm, we sharpened the pencil good. This is a cheap version.
Robbie's giggling, he must have helped.
No, Robbie wasn't involved in this project.
I didn't let this one get engineered.
Robbie had his protractor out.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Alberts?
I know, sir.
Do we have any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item 9, consider approving a request from James C. Niles for vacation of a 15-foot
utility easement that was to serve Legacy Lakes Phase 2, attractive land situated with the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 12, north, range 3 west of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Planning Commission. As a correction to item 9 on our city council agenda, the legal description of this property in the original Planning Commission documentation contains a scrivener's error. The description incorrectly states "range 3 west." It has been corrected in the Planning Commission meeting of July 14, 2014, to read "range 5 west" and is reflected in the minutes of that meeting. Copies of that corrected document have been distributed to each council member. Any motion made by the council on this item will encompass the correct legal description. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, this is, he's making some corrections there that are going to eventually evolve to another easement. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, I read that in the planning notes, and that's, so you don't have any problem with that then going forward as far as, as re-correcting the easement?
Council McCarron staff is in agreement with this. This was originally for residential development, it was actually laid out for that.
Yeah, it was an all-in, and they've changed it all now.
And they've changed it to commercial and frontage on Ranchwood, which required the realignment of that easement, and this is a requirement we have to bring back to actually state that we're vacating that easement to make it easier for him to follow.
So then he's going to come back to you then with a replat of that easement?
He's going to come back with an easement for the realignment of the sewer line, or proposed sewer line.
Do we have any further discussion?
Thank you, Mitch.
Having none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 10 is consider approving the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Yukon and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 173 for the fiscal years of 2014 to 2015 and 2015 to 2016. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, I just have one very quick comment. I was made aware by our city manager that Yukon by Movato, is that right?
Yes, real estate, yes, real estate firm.
Has named Yukon as the safest city to live in, in our state. Is that correct?
That is correct. Congratulations, John.
Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 11 is to consider approving the revised 2014-2015 attachment, A, pay scale between the City of Yukon and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2055, concerning the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Yukon and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2055, reflecting a 2.5% cost of living adjustment as afforded to all City of Yukon employees. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 12 is the city manager's report, these are information items only.
One item this, this week to report on is our sales tax report for the first reporting period of this fiscal year. It shows us up 2.84% over the same period last year and consequently since, 2.84% year to date as well. There are a couple of interesting comments about this, and I'll try to go quickly through this, but we also had this month, the first collection of sales tax in our Tiff District. It amounted to about $30, and we're very pleased to get that process started in our Tiff District. Certainly, we anticipate those collections to be up because this was for the reporting period of May of this year. Also, if you'll look at the use tax number, our collections were down 73.54% over the same period last year. You have heard me talk about the volatility in use taxes, the very reason why we do not try to budget any increase or decrease or anything in use tax for this year because I believe last month it was up 43%. This month it's down 73%, so very, very good numbers in my view to start the year. Also, in looking at the graph, which is part of your monthly reports that you get, you'll see that we are following a trend, a five-year trend, and starting out actually a little above that five-year trend. So, sales tax report, very good for this year. Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'll stand ready for your questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council for our city manager? Having none, we'll move on to item 13, new business.
No new business.
No new business. Item 14, council discussion. Mr. McCarron? Mr. McCarron?
Well, I'm just, uh, always proud to be part of Yukon and, and our, our community here, have been for a long time, and, and I just can't, you know, say enough about, you know, tonight, I know we had an issue that came up, uh, that I think is in need of a lot further discussion, and I'm really pleased to see that we're going to have an opportunity now to, to do that, uh, and, and hopefully get a whole bunch of folks on the same page. Uh, beyond that, Chief Corn, uh, as always, uh, it's wonderful to have, uh, our police department well thought of, and, and of course, I'm still reeling from the Fourth of July hot dogs, so I can't, can't say a whole lot. I, I did want to ask the mayor, or, I'm sorry, not the mayor, but, uh, the city manager, where are you going to put that thirty bucks?
I'm sure we can find a place.
Yeah, but it's also very pleasing to me to see that the district has now started, uh, some of the building is going on in there, we, of course, anticipating, uh, that to be something that's going to be very important to the future of Yukon, so with that, uh, Mayor, I yield back.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Well, first, I want to, uh, talk about Fourth of July Parade, it was awesome, it was wonderful, I hope everybody made it out there, it was wonderful. Uh, second, I'm glad to see that this item H tabled until we have a chance to, uh, really work out some issues here, and I would want to just thank the police department and the fire department for all their good work. That's all for me.
Thank you. Ms. Yanda?
Well, I just want to say thank you to Patrick for promoting Yukon on the website, and then also to all those that, um, made the Fourth of July such a huge success, I know there's a lot of people that are involved, and it's a wonderful celebration, and I think it's probably the best in not just our state, but the nation. Thank you, and thank you to the police department and the fire department.
Thank you. Mr. Alberts?
Don't have, congratulations on the contracts, um, thank you for keeping us safe and taking care of so many things, other than just fires here in the community, and being so helpful and, and well appreciated by the community, it's, it's good, it's, it's been a safe place to live for a long time, and it's because, you know, a longstanding tradition with both sets of you all, and I really appreciate that a lot. Um, the Fourth of July, we made a sandcastle, uh, my little boy, my grandson, we, um, we got it all stacked up, and it caved off, so then we made some base in it, and, I don't know, it, we, we had a great time, so, and the fireworks were great, I appreciate the hard work and all the dedication that goes in, uh, from the whole community to make that such a successful event, it really is neat, we had people that were here from Kansas City, and they came to our house, and so, I, I, I don't know that we always get a feel of all the different people that, that, that it affects, and I mean, it's an opportunity for the police officers, the firemen, Jeannie walks around and greets the whole crowd, you know, but those type of things, but it is, you are going to, you're making an impression on people from all over, and I mean, it just gets bigger and bigger, I mean, people that intended to go to Bricktown, uh, they said, no, we're not going to go to Bricktown, we're going to come to Yukon, so, it's a great thing, it's a great thing for the community, and you know, we hear a lot about, you know, well, how much does this cost? Well, I, I mean, it does cost money, but the benefit that it gives back to the community, not everything has a positive return on it, and, uh, the po- and when I say positive return, I mean, positive financial return, but the return that that has on our community and the image that it projects, y- your return is tenfold, so I appreciate all the people, police, fire, city, the businesses, et cetera, that give to that, that is a great impression that we leave on the community, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bottom, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I, I, I would, um, you know, this year, uh, Frankie's Four Sisters from California called and said they were coming to Freedom Fest, and, uh, stayed with us, uh, literally, for six days. Uh, all of those sisters are bossy, and I made-
You know you're being recorded, right?
Yes, I fully under-
You are, you are live on television.
So I made arrangements to, to be unavailable from time to time, but I, I wanted to tell you of the comment of my, uh, brother-in-law from California, who, uh, said, "This is what America is all about. What we experienced in Yukon over this entire six days is the very reason why everybody should consider coming to Yukon." Um, I thought that was really a pretty good comment, Mr. Bayer, um, 'cause before they